And then say who they are.
The user just spoke and it was Lisa Grotto.
Yeah.
It's 7:15.
She's also now at the. Yeah, we'll go ahead and start. I'm gonna start recording the meeting and.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, are you ready, Jorge?
Yes, I just ready where you are, Mayor.
All right, well, call the meeting to order and welcome everyone this evening for another one of our virtual meeting. And we also have summer here, so we're all inside our homes and we got full summer outdoors right now. And so Jorge, would you like to put up the flag and what every if everyone would just kind of take a moment of silence and recite the what agents to yourself? Thank you. All right, thank you, Jorge. And Mary could get a roll call, please.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Mike Sykes.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Rich Kellum.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Bill Coburn.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, okay, and next is business from the public and Peter, you were going to state about some letters that were submitted.
Sure, you bet. And in each of our counselors will have received the copies of the 15 letters that we've received in support of the Albany Visitors Association and Albany Downtown Association. I've got those letters here and you have them as well. Rebecca Bond and Lisa Grotto are attending the meeting tonight and they're welcome to make any comments as well. If they they would like to do so. But again, you have all those letters in your packets or they've been mailed to you by by Mary Dibble here within the last 24 to 36 hours.
Yep, okay, thank you. Rebecca or Lisa, did you want to say anything else additional?
This is Rebecca and we don't have anything more to say necessarily, but we're here to answer questions if you have any.
All right, so we will probably we'll get to that item at the end of the meeting on that. So Lisa. Did you have any now or maybe later?
I'm available when you need me.
So if I got kind of a feedback like a double U, are you on two times?
I'm available when you need me.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Was there any business from the public this evening that wanted to speak? And then also if folks aren't speaking, make sure that you kind of your little brain phone off so we don't get any back. But we'll be monitoring a lot of those, a lot of the microphones to make sure that they are off. Okay. All right, so with business here first, council, you have a first reading of ordinance. This is on page four. And this is over amending the Albany Municipal Code, the Transit Room Tax. Did staff have a report on this first? I think Seth was was Seth online? Or not? Or did staff have anything to say over this?
I can, Mayor, I can say something if Seth or Sophie aren't here. Basically, what we're doing tonight is just amending the TLT tax, removing some exemptions that existed before where we exempted bedded breakfasts and vacation rental dwellings from the tax. Those are now going to be taxed just like hotel rooms. And so that's basically the gist of this this ordinance tonight.
I move to approve.
This was council's request, so.
And Mayor, can I interrupt for a second and just let Jorge know that I've got a text from Jeff Blain that says that he can't get in because a meeting indicates it's full. So if Seth is trying to do the same thing, he might come up against the same obstacle.
I just got a text from him. I don't know what's what's going on that it just has the capacity of it says it's full as well here. So but I'm actually asking the folks to call into the number until I figure out what changed because something has changed that it doesn't allow more than 26 at a time.
Wow.
Yeah, because we had 30, what, five? Last time. So yeah, there must be something wrong there.
Something has changed since then we used it.
Okay. Okay, council, would you like Sean to read and do the first reading?
Yes, I'm moved to approve.
Okay, an ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Section 3.14.020 through 3.14.050, transient room tax by removing certain exemptions.
Move that.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance be read a second time in title only.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, second reading.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Section 3.14.020, 3.14.050, transient room tax by removing certain exemptions.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
I second it.
All right, and any discussion? Okay, oh, Rich?
Yeah, I just point out that this this brings us into what I what I consider to be the right stance where we're not discriminating against anybody. Now, everybody does.
Okay, you kind of sounded a little muffled there, Rich, talking.
I didn't hear him. I didn't hear what he said.
I couldn't hear a thing.
Yeah.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Okay, now we can hear you. So straight in the computer.
Now, this this brings us into a position where we are no longer discriminating against anybody. So now everybody who does a thing gets to pay the same thing. I'm in favor of it.
Yep.
I agree with you, Council Kellum.
Okay, all right, anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Next is increasing the Northwest Natural Gas Privilege Tax. And there's an ordinance to this on page eight. And Peter, did you want to say anything to this or item or is it going to be Gina or who?
Sure, I can I can address it if Gina is not on, but let me see.
I can see her on.
Okay, Gina, do you want to address it? If not, I can I can take it.
Sure. So when we were first talking about revenues, council had directed staff to look into increasing our franchise fees, our privilege taxes. This increase will raise the natural gas privilege taxes from 5% to 7%, which is in alignment with our other franchise agreements.
I move to approve that.
Oh, just a sec, we gotta have a first reading and a second reading.
Let's have a first reading then.
Okay, so Sean, first ordinance is on page eight.
All right, an ordinance of the City of Albany, Oregon, amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 5.36, Natural Gas Utility Tax Amount.
Mike?
We have moved to have it read a second time. In title only.
I second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, second reading, Sean.
An ordinance of the City of Albany, Oregon, amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 5.36, Natural Gas Utility Tax Amount.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Or was that a no, Dick?
No, I said aye to approve.
To approve, okay, gotcha. All right, motion carried unanimously. Okay. You counsel, and next is adoption of resolution. And the first is accepting CARES Act funding for Albany Transit. This is on page 10. And is Bailey on? Did she want to say anything to to this item?
I'm here, Mayor. Can you hear me?
I can hear you and I can see you.
Hey, success. Okay, I'm not going to repeat everything that's in the memo, but I'll give some highlights for those who are listening. The Federal Care, which is the Coronavirus Relief Act that was passed by Congress, became law in 2027. It contains specific funding for public transit. The Federal Transit Administration used their allocation methodology to define how much of the funding went to the various transit systems in the country. Albany Transit is classified as a small urban public transit system. And we were allocated just over $2.8 million in CARES Act funding for public transit. These funds can be used for eligible transit operational planning or capital expenses and are provided on a reimbursement basis. That's similar to how we currently use federal transit grant money. Examples of ineligible expenses would include overhead charges such as services and other administrative costs which cannot be reimbursed through the grant. CARES Act funds are unique in that they do not require any local match, which is very unusual. There's also not an expiry date per se, so they can be carried over into future future federal fiscal years. We anticipate drawing them down over the course of the next two to three fiscal years. There's a lot of uncertainty about how we'll end up ultimately using those funds because of the impacts and ongoing impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. But we anticipate using them to pay for operating and capital expenses. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you have and there's a resolution to accept the funds in your packet.
Hey, any questions? Okay, Bessie, was that a pin up?
Yes, I said Chris.
It kind of went side of the computer, so I wasn't.
Yeah, I know. Anyway. Chris, okay, I don't have it on my computer right now, that page, but do we get them? Do we get the money upfront or does it come in later as we spend it?
Yeah, it's a reimbursement basis. So for instance, and it's quarterly, we submit reports. So within a quarter, we spend $100,000 in eligible expenses. So this will be operating costs or maintenance costs, things like that. Then we submit a request for reimbursement and the money is transferred from the federal government to us. And that's how all of our federal operating grants work, grants for transit or reimbursement grants.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, there is a resolution on page 10.
Move for a first reading of the ordinance in title only.
No, this one's not an ordinance. This is a resolution. So you just need to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay. And any more discussion? Rich?
It's it's hard not to it's hard to lift look a gift horse in the mouth. This is quote free money unquote, but while I'm not going to stand in this thing's way. We're taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other. Taking money from the feds is still our money. And it just bothers me. That's if they just want to go on record, it bothers me.
Mary? All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yay.
There was a lot of voices in there, so I'm presuming that all passed unanimously.
It didn't.
Oh, it did?
One against.
One against, okay. All right, Mary? So five to one.
So that's one with Rich Kellum voting no.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Okay, on page 11, there's a resolution and this one's authorizing the financing of system development charges for 3454 Oak Grove Way Northwest. And does staff want to talk about this item at all?
Gina, you would you like to talk? We can.
I was I was just unmuting, sorry. It's a little tricky sometimes. So as you know, the city does offer financing for SDCs and assessments. We have an application for that. Interest rate for that is 6.55%, which is well above what our current interest. The other thing is that we do put a lien on the property, so if we were to sell, we would get our money back at that point. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So Gina, so what if somebody use builds it and then uses it as a rental, but so doesn't sell it? Then they we wouldn't they financing this for 10 years?
Possibly. They could they could do that. They're going to be paying interest that entire time.
Mm hmm. Okay, Bill, and then Rich?
So Gina, you said that we have this form or this program on file. And this particular individual is just choosing to utilize that program?
That's right. We haven't used it a whole lot in the past. Interest rates have been lower than what we could offer. But there was a time, probably back in the 90s, where we did this quite a bit.
All right, well, I guess my thought is if it's there to be used and somebody wants to use it, then I don't see a problem with it. I mean, I might have a problem with the whole program, but that's not before us.
Rich?
Yeah.
Alex?
Thinking about this strictly from a financial perspective, we're making money on it. Let's shut up and take the money.
You know, we're hoping that those interest rates will help offset the administrative costs of of running this.
Okay.
So what so Gina, what is the the interest rate on this?
6.55%.
And the question the question of if it's rental property, does that affect that? You know, will we have to wait for that money for 10 years or is it if they use it for business, do we collect that money? How's that work?
Well, we will have a contract in place and I believe that it's set for 10 years in this specific instance. If they were to sell this property, we would we have a lien on it. And so we would be able to get our money back at that point.
Okay, thank you. How about if it's rented in definitely?
Well, they still have a contract to have it repaid within a certain length of time. And I believe that the outside time limit is 10 years.
The choice according to.
Many years.
The choice according to form semi annual payments over 10 years or monthly payments over 10 years.
Okay.
It could be sooner than that.
Uh huh, Mike?
Question is, are we still collecting for parks SDCs?
Yes.
Yes, I believe that's included in this in this assessment.
Well, then that poses a question if we're the park SDCs go for the construction and building of new parks, correct?
New capability.
Capabilities.
New capabilities. Well, we don't have the money to maintain any parks if we build them new. So why would we? Why are we still collecting parks SDC when we've got a pot of money sitting there? We can't use it because we can't maintain if we build it. Does that make sense?
I would have to defer that question to the planning department.
Well, we can. No, it's a good question, Council Sykes, and there is an imbalance in in what we have in SDCs for parks and what we have to operate and maintain parks. But it's impossible to tell in the future what your future parks acquisition needs will be and what those costs will be. But you're right, that imbalance is worth worth some more discussion. But as Council Kellum pointed out, right now, the question is really just whether or not you want to authorize the finance director to enter into this against this applicant.
Well, I would just like like to put that on the table for us to discuss further at another time. But that's I don't have any other problem with with the contract since we have it in place and the interest rate's 6.5%. Like Rich said, we'll make money back on that. We'll make our money. It's better than what we can get in the bank at this point. So I'm for it.
We will add the discussion of parks SDCs and imbalance with operating funds to a future discussion.
Thank you.
Dick, did you have anything else?
I'm just eating peanuts.
Oh, okay.
He's a squirrel. He's eating nuts.
Share.
Counselors, anything else? Other words, there's a resolution 11.
I've moved to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Peanuts are not nuts, they're legumes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion. For unanimous, Mary. Okay, next we go down to a resolution that's on page 20, and this is a ward of contracts for auditing services for Bolt Carlisle and Smith. They carry over item from our last council meeting. Gina, did you say anything else towards this?
Last time we came to council, there were some questions regarding best practices. I think everybody has seen with the GFOA, the Government Finance Office Associations recommendations are. In this case, best practice, there is some some thought that alternating audit firms can be a good practice. In this case, GFOA says that there are there are a dearth of qualified auditors. And so sometimes you just don't have that option. And in this case, we had two proposals for audit services. In order to follow procurement rules, we weren't able to, we would not have been able to keep Bolt Carlisle from sending in their proposal. And we did a we went through the process and they came out ahead. So really, it's we need to award it to Bolt Carlisle. We did change the extensions. We removed the extensions from the contract. GFOA also recommends a contract length of five years or longer. And so we set it at five years.
Okay.
Questions? All right, so Alex, your screen went off, so I don't know if you put up a pinned speaker or not. But other words, there's a resolution, folks, on page 20.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion?
And I don't. Thank you, Gina, for doing that work.
Did we lose?
Absolutely.
Okay, there you are. Okay, you didn't have any questions?
No, I didn't. I appreciate Gina for doing the work for us.
Okay, all right. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Okay, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Gina. Next is utility billing bill, printing and mailing services to Info Send. This is on page 22. And that I think Diane was on. Diane, is this your item?
It is, but Sean Park was going to take the lead on responding to this.
Okay, Sean? I don't know if I see him on. Yeah, there. So Sean?
Good evening, council. Do you hear me okay?
Yes, uh huh.
Um, I'm simply on hand to answering regarding this.
Okay. All right, any questions, council? Of Sean over this item? Mike?
Why don't we? Why don't we do this in house? Why are we contracting this out?
The utility billing, mailing and print services require extensive capital investment in very, very expensive printing and shipping facilities that the city doesn't have the funds to do ourselves. It's.
Thank you.
Sure, the a little bit of background, I'm not that sure how much you may have. Is to provide mailing, utility bill, printing and mailing services for the City of Albany's not monthly, but regular utility bills, which are over $20,000 per month. It operates in tandem with the MIMIS utility billing system, which will be coming online this winter. And takes the data from that new utility billing system, generates bills and sends them to our sends those to our customers. So it's it's a pretty large operation. The city just simply doesn't have the infrastructure, let alone the room for such an operation or the personnel to 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 manage it.
Thank you.
Okay, Alex?
So is my question to you, Sean, was there a competitive bidding process or is this something that doesn't have to be competitively bid? Through the public dollars?
No, thank you, Council Johnson. There was a formal RFP process that was completed in we started in April. And we had four four proposers who qualified. We had four who submitted and all four of them qualified to be moved forward in the analysis process. They all put through a scoring analysis of four primary areas of cost, implementation strategy, references and technical requirements. And the top two were then evaluated for ease of use and vendor interview. And then the finalist was was chosen based on the total scores awarded.
So to be a favor in the future, like we do our parks projects, we do our lights, street light projects. That data would be really nice to see in the future, just so you know.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Need more questions? All right, not seeing any. There is a resolution on page 22.
I would move for the adoption of the resolution.
I will second.
All right, any more discussion? If all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you, counselors.
Okay, thank Sean. Thank you, Diane. On the following page, and this is approval of an agreement. This is the Albany Millersburg Stormwater Intergovernmental Agreement, and it starts on page 23 and probably Chris wants to talk about it. Okay, Chris?
Back again. Thank you, Mayor. So this is a new IGA with the City of Millersburg. We, as the council knows, we have existing IGAs with them for both water and wastewater services. This is our first IGA with them for stormwater. And this IGA is a little bit different than the past. It requires that the City of Albany host the mapping data and asset data for the City of Millersburg Stormwater System and also provide the underground locates for their stormwater system. We currently host their water and sewer data and we do the locates for their water and sewer systems. We haven't done stormwater in the past because they haven't had a good understanding of their stormwater network, but they recently updated their stormwater master plan and got up to date asset data. So we're going to host that in our computerized maintenance. So we're going to host that in our computerized maintenance management system, and we might run the occasional report for them, et cetera, and then we'll do the underground locates as they get called in. All of those services are going to be paid by Millersburg on time and materials basis, so we'll be sending them, we send them a bill quarterly, and these services will just be added to that as we do work on their data. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, their council did already pass this IGA, so they've already.
So Chris, when, you know, we've been getting more and more, you know, providing services for Millersburg, and it was one that I just want to make sure we get a full cost recovery out of our service, so so when it comes to this agreement, then are they still going to be paying, say, a percentage that would be going into our IT, our central services? Are they going to be kind of charged just the same as we do our other programs that we have?
So we charge them a fully burdened personnel rate for the staff time that works on these projects, whether it's the data technician or the field staff. They get charged the fully burdened rate for labor. They get charged, if we have a field person that goes out with the truck, they get charged the equipment rate for the truck. And then they will also pay a percentage of the software license fees for our CMS software. So we're recovering those costs as well.
So, but you know how it is for each of our programs, so say, everything in public works, then a program will be paying into central services. Because there's a fee, because, you know, pretty much central services, us discussing this now is a part of going through our, you know, the city manager's office, finance department, and all that. So are they, is there a line item within these charges to give us that full cost recovery for our central services?
Not directly, so like, for instance, my time tonight is not going to be charged to Millersburg. It would be only the staff time that's working on their stormwater infrastructure. And within their, that staff rate calculation, it does include, it does cover the full cost of that person per hour, but it does not include the programmatic costs, I think is what you're saying, for the, for the, for instance, the CMS program. I'm not sure, maybe Jeff Babett, he could help me with that, but there's, I'm not sure if there's a nexus to figure out what that is on a per-hour basis. But I, we can look into that, but that's not how the charges are set up.
Right, I mean, I know we've been adding more services, and, you know, not, you know, with fire, and now with, you know, water, sewer, and storm. I just think what our Albany residents have to pay for the older system, so should Millersburg. So I, I think we really need to be looking at that in the future when we are going through these agreements, to make sure we get our because, yeah, it's not fair to Albany residents to be paying for a service that Millersburg is not. They're receiving the service, but they're not paying the full cost, so.
Yeah.
That's my, my view on that one.
I understand what you're saying, I'd have to think about if there's a way to, to divide that cost on a per-hour basis and charge it back, I have to look into that.
Yeah, well, we've always kind of had the formula that is set from finance department, you know, for, for all programs when it comes to central services, though. I think Gina could come up, but, yeah. Okay, Mike, and then Bessie.
Chris, you say burden, you're charging burden, is that our raw cost? So if with purrs and insurance and everything else, you come up with $50 for that individual and his wages, that's what you're charging to Millersburg?
Yes, it's their full personnel.
Okay, that's not really their full personnel cost, because you have, like Sharon said, you have administrative fees, you have overhead fees, you have maintenance fees on the vehicles and everything else. I
Well, so
We have, we're not covering our costs, we're not covering, we're not covering our overhead. We're not covering the cost of you, we're not covering the cost of a lot of things. Basically, we're just changing, trading labor out, and that's not a true, that's not a true burden to operate that individual, or that, those people that are out in the field, and the staff back in the office and everything else. If we're just charging the burden of that individual, we're losing money in the long run.
Yep. I will see if we can figure out a way to divvy that up. It's the way the central service charges are calculated is if you then take that as a program cost, and then try to parse it out to each individual person, is a little bit harder to figure out, but we'll look into it and see if we can. I'm not sure if, if we can definitively do that. On the equipment thing, I just want to reassure you that we charge the FEMA rate for equipment, which is high. It includes a lot of, it's more than the cost that operates, operate that equipment per hour, so it includes some recovery there.
I think Mike had some more, and then still.
It, 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 it's really easy to do. Let's, let's take CH2M Hill for a minute, okay? And how they charge out. They'll take their raw cost and multiply it by 3.5, and that's what they bill the customer at, okay? And that's why they're so expensive. Most, most firms, contractors, and everything else, take their labor cost and have a multiplier, and that's what gets charged out, so that they cover all the expenses of that pro, of that individual, and they, they it's not that they make money, but they cover their true cost of that individual.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, I understand what you're saying. And we will look into it and see if we can come up with a way to allocate those costs. I think the language that's in the IGA is not precise as to the rates that are going to be charged. It just says something like the burdened administrative rate for each person's time. So we might be able to talk with the Millersburg staff about that and say, you know, we hadn't discussed this before, but this is, this is how we're going to set these rates and include these overhead charges, and just make sure that's okay with them.
Because this does say for a 10-year term with options to extend, so if we're going to go this path, down this route, we need to get it right, or other words, we're stuck with it for 10 years and subsidizing, you know, Millersburg.
Yeah.
Some of this is, some of this is kind of hard to hear because people are cutting out, but I, I kind of agree with both you, Mayor, and, and Mike. First thing would be, why couldn't we have a line item for all of these special you know, so that we know how much we're bringing in, how much we're going out? And then I'm thinking, do we, I like the idea of what CH2M Hill does, you know? That way, they know exactly what it's going to be. And then if we change it, would we have to change the IGA agreement? Maybe Sean can fill in on that, because, I mean, if they already passed it, and we don't, then we have to start all over. I'm just, don't know how that works, but I, I agree that we need to make sure that we cover our costs and that we don't end up in the downside.
Yeah, I mean, was, the intention of both of us was for the city of Albany to recover our costs. When we develop our burdened rates, it includes more than just the hourly charge for the so I don't think that they would be opposed to us discussing that, but we hadn't discussed this particular item specifically, so. Anyway, I got a text from Jeff Babett that says, when we charge our fully burdened costs, we recover our central service costs. I can't explain that to you right now off the top of my head, and he can't get into the meeting, but we can come back to you and discuss it at another date.
Okay, hang on, folks, oh, now I got my screen back up, I lost everybody here. Okay, I see Dick now. Yep, Dick?
It wouldn't hurt my feelings to make a percent or two. I think maybe we ought to add on 10% to our cost and charge them that.
So Chris, is this, is this something that maybe can be looked at and then come back? Or, or is there something to put here for maybe six months and bring it back to the council, instead of a 10-year contract here?
I'd rather not, have you not take action on it tonight, and bring it back with a a better explanation of the rate, and make sure we're capturing what you want to capture, rather than only pass a short-term one and then have to redo it. So I don't, not going to hurt anything, I don't think, this is just data and locates, we can keep going like we are going now. But we can bring it back.
Okay, all right. Bill, did you want to say anything else, or are you okay with them bringing it back?
Well, I'm fine, but I just wanted to weigh in that I agree with Mike. I think we just need to cover our costs and make sure we know what our costs are. I got to disagree with you, Dick, I don't think we need to make money on it, that just, you know, a friendly community next door, let's, let's work together on it.
Well, it's great to be friends, but I hate to lose money on it. I'd rather, I'd rather err on the side of having a bit of income out of it.
Well, the burden, I think, is on staff to get the actual cost. If I was Millersburg, I wouldn't appreciate saying, well, we don't really know what our costs are, so here's a number, and we'll bump it 10%.
Okay, all right. Oh, Rich?
I think Mike, Bill are correct. And I guess I'm going to agree with, with Bill, with, let's not, let's not look like we're stabbing our friends. You know, we need to make sure, though, that we are recovering all the money that we're spending to do it. And I think any reasonable individual living in Millersburg is going to understand that and agree with it. I think we need to do that with everything we do with someone else, whether that used to be the, you know, whether sewer and water with them, or it's, you know, the preschool thing, it's always, it should be recovering our costs.
Okay, all right, so Chris, you want to bring this item in?
Sure, we'll bring it.
Okay. All right, was that it, Council?
Council of Sykes asked.
Oh, Mike, yes?
Can you see Mike there?
Yeah, hey, I'm waving.
Mike waving his pen.
Yep, I see him.
Again, I got to go with, with Bill and, and Rich and say we have to have a way, there's got to be a way, because I can tell you, I've done it, Bill's done it.
I've done it. I've done it.
Alex has done it. We figure out what our cost is, and we know what it costs to do what we do, and then we make sure that we have a profit on it. If this, if we're just saying, oh, we're going to charge burden for something, and not know what the true burden is, we're going down the hole. Now, what Dick said is to add 10% on it, he's hedging his bets. We still don't know what Rich said, like Rich said, is we need to know the true cost of that individual from Chris Bailey all the way down. If Chris puts in an hour, they charge out X amount of dollars. Because there's electricity, there's wear and tear, there's all of those things that come into this formula. And I just don't think that saying, here's the burden, the way we go is the way to do it, like what Bill, Bill and Rich said. We got to know what it is.
Yep. Well, and there's still just the cost of the HR, each of the employees that work there and finance, so there's a lot of central service charge.
Yeah. Can I jump in real quick?
Yeah, Alex?
Well, I, I agree with everyone on that, we need to understand our true costs. When I worked at HP and Agilent, when I left my house to go to Chicago for a meeting, I built, I built them from the top. So I landed. This is travel time, our staff's travel time, we're in teleon vehicles. It, it needs to be a methodology to figure that out. And I understand burden, yes, but true cost is really important to all of us, because we cannot operate at a deficit with, with a city that's growing. You know, we're, we don't want to put ourselves in a further, in a further bind by financing some other city that's, you know, moving our residents out into their community. And if they're going to use our services, then they need to pay us for that, the true cost.
Yep. Okay.
I think, Mayor, I have probably not done a very good job of explaining this, but when we come back, I'll have a little primer on central service charges, how they're distributed to our budgets, and how we recover them, so that we can pay for the services we receive. But I would like to reassure everyone who may be listening, that we know what those costs are. We don't not know what our costs are. And I'll bring back, when we come back, a better explanation of how, when we bill out, we are recovering our costs.
Great. Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay.
So you have the known, unknowns, and the known unknowns, you just don't have the unknown unknowns, right?
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Okay, next is the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that you need to have pulled off this evening for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I second that.
Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, consent calendar is approved. Next is a staff report, reclassification request, facilities, maintenance, electrician, public works. And whose item is that?
It's just my nightmare.
Okay. I think I lost your screen, Chris, oh, you went up now, so somebody up the meeting, you just hit on my screen.
I probably lost some for that stormwater IGA discussion, probably four people out. Okay, so this item is a request for the council to approve a reclassification for the current facility's electrician position, moving it upward on the pay scale. This came as a request from the employee through a process that is defined in our APSME collective bargaining agreement. This particular position was not specifically studied in the class and comp study that we just completed. So it was not evaluated and not adjusted as part of that process, if you remember that process. Seems like a really long time ago, but it wasn't. So HR had to go conduct an analysis of the current job requirements for this position and do a comparison with similar positions in other municipalities. There are not a whole lot of small cities who have electricians on staff, especially electricians who are supervisor, have their supervisor license. But they were able to find a couple of comparables. And based on the work that we're requiring of the position, HR concluded that the reclassification request was supported. And we're readying the position to be placed at salary level 150, which is in your memo. One of the benefits of having an employee with a supervisor's license is that he can take out electrical permits for the city, when the city is required to get permits doing for complicated electrical work. Previously, we had to pay a contractor who had a supervisor's license that worked for us. So now our employee pulls permits, rather than us paying the other company their fully burdened rate for their supervisor electrician plus profit. That saves us money. Another benefit is that when we design and build new electrical control cabinets, this employee does almost all of that work. He's installed multiple control cabinets on facilities like sewer lift stations. He's installed multiple control cabinets on facilities like sewer lift stations, canal flow control structures, within our treatment facilities, and many more. Um, one example of a project that he did, cost the city about $15,000 in hardware and about $5,000 in his time. Um, the, a similar control panel, when we had to bid that out, cost the city $60,000 to build. Cost savings there. In addition, we have, um, the benefit of having one person who designs our control panels, which is nice to have some continuity. So when you go work in, in these panels, you know where everything is. It all basically looks the same. This guy, um, is paid by charging back to either the water or sewer funds that he's working on. And both of the water and sewer funds have adequate resources to cover the increase. Um, and, you know, I recognize that there's a lot of economic pressure on the city. Um, but we recommend that this reclass go forward, because we're, we're realizing cost savings by having such a highly skilled electrician do the work in-house, rather than have to bid all of that out. So I'm happy to take questions you may have.
Great, I see yours.
Yes, I have two questions. One, and I guess maybe Bill could answer this, being from the industry. The supervisor electrician is not necessarily someone who supervises other people? Is that?
No, not necessarily.
You're saying no, what I said was incorrect?
That's not quite accurate. I mean, for, for the state of Oregon, a definition, a supervisor does multiple things. Number one, he signs permits, uh, because every electrical contractor has to take out permits for a job, and they have to have a supervisor that's, that signs permits.
Okay.
The other thing is that, in an electrical contracting business, that supervisor also has to, uh, kinda manage all the employees, if you will, to make sure that all of their electricians are licensed and their licenses are current and, and that type of thing. And they do supervise electricians. So that's, I normally look at a supervisor. I can see where the city's situation is different than that of an electrical contractor.
Yeah. And, and the other question is, do we ever demote people? I mean, you know, I've been through, I don't know, 377 of these over the years. And it seems like we all, someone comes and says, we need to increase, increase, increase. We never say, well, wait a minute, we found somebody that's wrong. How do we handle it when we find out that someone is being paid out of?
Yeah, yeah.
Out of the area in the wrong direction.
As you're talking, more and more examples are popping into my head. So, yeah, we've, we've instituted reclassifications downward on employees. When, for instance, I did that when I had a lead worker in a group I no longer needed a lead in. So I reclassified an employee down to just a regular operator. We've had, in the class of comp study, we had, uh, certain job classifications that were found to be paid above, well above the market comparable. But those people were frozen. They were not, uh, their pay wasn't reduced, but they were redlined, so they didn't get colas, uh, and won't get colas until their positions come back into line with, um, with the market and with comparables. And we've also had, you know, actual demotions for performance issues, um, where, which is another problem, but we, we've done that too. So we've, especially during the last, the great recession, I think we did a lot of, um, either eliminating or reclassifying downwards positions to save money. And Public Works, we did, yeah.
Yeah, the main difference is that those don't come to city council, because those are not, those are reducing the budget, so it's not something that.
Right.
Will come to city council.
The policy is, we come to the council when we need to spend more money, but because the budget could be impacted, we don't come to the council when we need to spend less money, because you've already approved.
Maybe what I would suggest is, once in a while, you come to the council and tell us how you saved money, because while you're telling us that, you're also telling everyone in the city behind the camera lenses.
Yeah, those are budget hearings. I, I know I did.
No more lists than the budget hearings.
Yeah.
You know, so if it was done in the day-to-day, once in a while, I think it would be well-received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex?
No, I have nothing. I was just saying, thanks for your report, Chris.
Oh, thank you.
All right. Counsel, have any other questions? Um, so if not, then what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion anymore? Seeing any? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right. Chris, we kept you busy tonight.
Yeah.
Now is a transient lodging tax fund discussion. And Peter, I think you're gonna be leading on this one, right? Whoops, you gotta turn your mic on.
Just had Seth join in, so he's, uh, he's managed to get, and he'll run you through the proposal.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. I'm sorry I missed the earlier bit on TLT and the change in policy. I was having trouble getting on. Um, I'm happy to report, that's the first real technical prop I've had since the remote working. So, pretty good, um, so far. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, very good. Well, I'll jump in then. Um, in our last council meeting, we spoke about the difficult situation that we're in currently and heading into regarding transient lodging tax revenue. And, uh, I'm here this evening to put forward some near-term solutions for balancing the economic development budget, of which the TLT taxes the primary source of revenue for that budget. As a recap, starting in February and into March and through the rest of this fiscal year, we've had unprecedented lows in travel and transient lodging tax revenues. As you know, we've talked about that at some length now, and, and very low numbers. Um, one of the challenges that, well, and I'll just say this as well, going into the 2020, 21 fiscal year, state of Oregon and everybody who seems to be in the know is projecting TLT revenues to stay very low as well. Um, it looks like the average projection is somewhere between 40 and 50% of what's normal for the state of Oregon, which is an unfortunate situation. And to compound that, make it a little more difficult for us, in the middle of a biennial budget, is, like other programs, we project into the future what we think our anticipated revenues will be, and then build our budget around that. And I think what I mentioned before is, unlike our general fund, transient lodging tax is almost real-time. And it's not a year, it's not based on yearly collections through property taxes. So, um, it means that we're affected in a much shorter order as well. So to, in order to balance the biennial economic development budget, uh, we're gonna propose a couple things for you. There's two things in, in particular. One, we need to alter the allocation timing of our TLT monies, meaning the money that we collect and then spend and pay towards other agencies and entities to help support tourism primarily, but also economic development and a few other things, uh, but primarily tourism. We need to alter the timing of those allocations a little bit, and I'll jump into that. And then, secondly, uh, we need to seriously discuss some, um, temporary cuts for this coming fiscal year in order to balance the, the biennial budget. So with that, um, the way that many of the allocations work, when we pay an outside agency, say like the ABA or the ADA or AMDEC or whatever, it's not always the case, but many of these allocations are made, including Northwest Arden Air and so forth, towards the beginning of the fiscal year. So in the case of this last fiscal year, we allocated money that did not come in, obviously due to very unprecedented circumstances. Um, so what we're proposing then, to avoid that in this coming year, since it's very difficult to project what our TLT revenues will actually be, is instead of doing yearly allocations, we move to a quarterly allocation. And this would be based on the previous quarter's actual TLT revenues, not what we project in the future, but we've, what we've actually collected. So we'd only be able to pay out what we've, what we've brought in. And this would be, uh, based on essentially a ratio. So we're not proposing any change at all to the amount or the total proportional amount that an agency is budgeted to receive from our TLT revenues. We're just saying that, um, that total amount is gonna be less, and therefore what we allocate will probably be, probably be less. But we can only do that based on what we have. If we do it on projections, we may end up in a deeper hole than we are currently. So, for example, if agency X is budgeted to receive 40% of all the TLT revenue that we collect on an annual basis, they would receive 40% of the TLT collections actually collected from the previous quarter. So that gives us a chance to say, what's kinda happening right now? And based on that, we'll do allocations moving forward. Um, this does not alter what an agency's slice of the pie is, so to speak. It just means that the pie is gonna be a little smaller than normal. And, um, I'll just also make a note that it does not negatively affect the total percentage of what we're spending, uh, of TLT revenue for tourism promotion. Again, it just means the total pie is a little bit smaller. And for your reference, currently, we're spending about 66%, just a shy, a hair more than that, uh, on tourism-related expenditures. So that's the first item. It's more of an administrative change, but it affects how our contracts look with the various people that we partner with to accomplish the missions of, of the city. Um, and we, even though we're on a biennial budget, we do those contracts annually. So, in order to make up for lost revenue from this fiscal year, moving into next fiscal year, and actually balancing the biennial budget, we'll need to look at some, I think what's fair to call temporary cuts for this coming fiscal year. Not permanent, but, but temporary for this fiscal year. Um, and I'll just walk through those with you right now. We'll also talk about a few partial cuts, and then we, you can ask all the questions that you like, and we can discuss. So, in terms of temporary cuts and TLT spending for the, this coming year, um, the first one, oh, just sizable, would be the Northwest Arden Air. Now, the festival's already canceled. It's not happening. So it allows us to take the 153,000 plus that is normally spent on that festival and retain that to help balance the budget. We don't anticipate we're even gonna get that revenue in, so that helps us in the long run. And, uh, we've, of course, worked on all these with the appropriate agencies and staff, uh, in this case, parks, pretty closely. So they don't have some hidden outstanding costs that they're now gonna be in a worse place off, uh, without this funding. So they understand and, uh, think it makes sense as well. The next one would be the collaborative tourism, tourism promotion grant. This is to the tune of $48,000. It's usually somewhere close to $50,000. Um, that was budgeted for, but we'd anticipate pulling that back in its entirety for just this next fiscal year, but it could be revisited after that. And then the third thing for a full, a full cut, again, temporary, would be what we normally do for the airport. So this does not affect the airport's operating costs whatsoever, but we have budgeted to, on an annual basis, give about $72,000 to the airport. And this goes in strictly to their capital improvements budget. Um, and so, working with Chris Bailey on this, Chris feels like they're in a, a very strong position with funds that have not been used in the past for their capital improvements. Um, and again, these funds are typically used as match dollars for federal aviation monies that come through. And they don't anticipate any large expenditures this coming fiscal year either. So again, uh, no big issue there, uh, at least according to, to Chris and the Airport Commission. Um, and then I wanna just go into some partial cuts. There are two line items that we budget for each year. They're to cover overtime costs for police and fire for large events. So when, when we have Northwest Arden Air, for example, or a parade, or, um, concerts in the park, those kind of things, to help cover the overtime that both police and fire may incur, we have these line items, and then they just bill against those. So, given that many of those events are not gonna happen, in fact, the large majority, over 80% of them, um, we looked at the, the relative savings possible and would propose an 80% cut to those. So we have some money set aside for, for example, the Veterans Day Parade, um, hoping that happens here this year. Um, but there's really not many other events that are probably gonna take place, where they would normally have presence. Um, so both of those items, so that's, that we normally budget about 25 grand for each one of those, and we would be cutting those back by, by 20 grand apiece. Total savings of $40,000. And then the same would go for the trolley. Uh, many of the events that the trolley is typically used for, we budget about, it's actually pretty steep, nearly $20,000 a year. That doesn't always get spent, but that covers both maintenance and the cost of drivers, um, which the Parks Department maintains and manages. And so we'd propose a 50% reduction there, relative to the number of events that are not gonna happen, although it will be used. Uh, and then the last one, uh, again, the last one is regarding AMDEC. So when we think about the spending of transient lodging tax dollar, revenue dollars, half of it goes directly, more than half, actually, like I mentioned, 66% or more, goes directly towards tourism promotion of different kinds. The other half of it's spent primarily on economic development and a few other things. So, um, we've been in discussion with AMDEC, this is the Albany Millersburg Economic Development Corporation, for anyone listening. We've been in discussion with them, um, and their partners. So we're talking about the county, uh, Millersburg itself, AMDEC, its board members, uh, about the difficult budget realities that we're facing currently. And so, in working with staff, Peter, Gina, and so forth, we would propose to cut back our typical contracted services from 52,000 a year by about 80%, so down to $10,000. Now, there's some math behind this I'd like to explain to you. Um, first of all, with anticipated revenues being 40 to 50% best case, right, of what's normal, there are, AMDEC as well as everybody else, per our TLT policy, would already be, um, experiencing that loss in revenue as well, right? So they're already looking at a 40 to 50% cut. Um, and then per our discussion earlier about striving to balance our budget, not spending what we don't have, um, we also, AMDEC is one of those cases where we allocated money previous to, or prior to, to bringing that revenue in, right, because it, it died here in the last quarter. So we spent money we don't have. So that, in order to balance the hole that we're in and look at reduced revenues this year, that's why we're proposing the, the cuts that we are. Um, we are and are, and willing to, well, we are in having , uh, more discussions with AMDEC and its associated partners on what next year's contract for services will look like. And though that contract will be different from what it has been, we're no less committed, obviously, to economic development. In fact, the city's made some pretty significant investments in building its own economic development capacity over the last several years, and has been actively engaged in an ongoing conversation about what the future of regional collaboration around economic development here will look like moving forward in, in the coming years. And I've said it before, and I'll say it probably, uh, 10,000 times again before my career's over, but economic development is definitely a team sport, right? And it's our job here at the city to make sure that we're augmenting our own economic development capacity where needed, to help create and retain and attract great jobs and businesses, and, uh, ensure it's a lovely place to live, play, and visit. And we appreciate so much the good work that so many do, both in and outside of the city, to achieve those goals. However, as a result of the coronavirus and the ensuing economic and, and health crises, it's not business as usual right now, and we can't continue spending TLT revenues as if it were, if we're going to balance the biennial budget. And we appreciate it, and will, well, certainly appreciate the fact that it's gonna take some creativity and different approaches on the part of the partners that we typically pay, um, to the way that they function, with significantly less money, uh, from us. Less TLT revenue, that is. Um, so it's a, it's a difficult situation, but making every effort we can to balance the budget. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to turn the time back to you and certainly be here to answer any questions. I think Peter and Gina are probably available as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Seth. Um, no, I, I totally understand. I think that's a good approach to, um, do a quarterly for allocations and, uh, then base it on that previous quarter, so we'd know what those actuals would be. Um, I think that's a, um, you know, a good, um, good change to make there. Um, I can, I agree about the cuts that you do have down as proposed, but what would really be helpful is if we had what our, you know, existing is up against what is proposed, too. And then we can be able to look and see how much we actually are getting in revenues. Um, but it Um, but it would look like for each quarter. Are you going to come back to the council? Uh, maybe the next meeting with something that's more down on paper, so we know what we're really looking at and compare.
Yeah, well, let's just dial in a little bit of what you want to see exactly, because what what happens with T L T revenues is there's a bit of a lag from when they actually come in to when we know. So from the time someone goes and pays at a hotel, it takes a few months for us to really find out what that is. Therefore, we're going to look at it quarterly. So when you talk about actual numbers, do you want a total value that we're talking about in temporary cuts? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, because putting down what our revenues are for the year, what are you um, this this fiscal year, and then for next fiscal year, what we have for that adopted budget. And by changing the, you know, these allocations, what is like for our budget up against what projections we're doing for revenues?
Yeah. We can put that on the table for you. We already have it in spreadsheets. I'd be happy to share that with you. The trick is looking into our crystal ball and and knowing what the actual revenues will be, but the best case is we we need to use what the projections are and um, based on that, we're actually i- in a position to balance the budget with the numbers I've given you, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, Rich?
Yeah. Uh, you, doing the the first portion, I think, makes makes good sense. Uh, before we do the second portion, however, I would like to hear from all of our partners uh what what steps they're taking to save money. I mean, to some extent, these these, some of these groups are kind of an extension of of our bureaucracy. I mean, like another piece of over in the corner. So when they need a, need something, they look to us to help provide it for them. And as such, I mean, Parks has taken a big hit, uh, police, fire, yada, 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 yada. Uh, I would like to know what it is that the various groups are doing from their perspective, what their plan is going forward. Because, you know, if you think it's tough now, um, you probably know better than most, Seth, that, you know, when somebody says forty, well, when the National uh Chamber of Commerce has forty percent, uh, most people have no clue what that means in people. Uh, forty percent of small business is a gigantic number.
Yeah.
And I think we, we should not be doing anything that that ties up the money that we, you know, we may need to use it for something else. Um, I mean, we, we have some very bad choices coming up if we don't do it right. So I'd say, I'd say the first part of it's great. The second part of it, I'd like to hear back from all those organizations what it would mean to them, uh, what, what uh actions they are taking to lower their costs uh or give the service in a different way, so so it doesn't cost so much. Well, they're not there, well, I mean, you know, I've all said before, you know, you put ADA and A V A together over in the Carnegie Library and it, it, they're saving, each of them saving at least one person. And the Carnegie Library would save one person.
Counselor, I appreciate that. It's a great point. And um, I think what we're looking for from the council this evening is that we're on the right track. These numbers seem reasonable. Um, and if that's the case, and I'm not sure it is quite yet, but if it is the case, our next step is all these outside agencies are actually on annual budgets. So they're in the the last throes of their budgeting process. We did send them a letter here a couple of weeks ago, and prior to that, I've been having a lot of discussions about this. We meet together weekly to talk about the, the, you know, the difficult impacts of uh COVID nineteen, but um we did send them a letter, an official letter, and and obviously letting them know that we're going to be working towards reduced allocations because we have to. We don't have, we can only spend what we have. And uh, I'd be happy at this point to go back and get some, collect from those agencies that, you know, what their anticipated work is going to look like and how they want to adapt to it. And they can come back and share that with you at our next council meeting.
I I think that would be the smart way to do it. Um, but we could, I mean, to, for the immediate, say, hey, look, right now, we're not going to be doing a whole lot anyway. Um, so, you know, if if there's only sixty-one percent of what there was before, or twenty-three for whatever it is, that's the money we have to split up.
Yeah.
Until, until we can come back and make make a real plan.
Okay, Bill had a, Bill was next.
Yeah, Seth, I agree with the first part as well. You know, I I wrote down, you're only going to pay out what actually comes in. That's a physically sound uh policy. Uh, is there an opportunity to hear from the Transient Lodging Tax Committee, either a a virtual meeting or if the halls back open uh next week on the third, they could meet and uh get some input from them?
Yeah, uh, Counselor uh Coburn, what is it you'd like to hear from them?
Well, just their input on uh your proposal.
Yeah, so uh, we can convene them. I'll I'll say that per their their charter and charge, the primary purpose has been to inform what the transient lodging tax policy looks like. And this isn't so much amounts that go where, but and rather what happens when we have increases and primarily increases, decreases not covered well in the policy, as it turns out. Um, and so we we can facilitate that if you like.
Well, I'm just looking online, um, and it says the T L T Advisory Committee reviews actual transit lodging tax revenues and any implications to the allocation methodology described in the policy and may recommend changes to the allocation methodology or the policy. So it seems like this is right up the alley. It's kind of like, I'd like the planning session to look at a, or the planning commission to look at zoning change before it comes to council.
Sure. Well, we can do that, um, if you like. I'm not sure how quickly we can convene them. We'll, we'll try to do that as quickly as possible. And I think the other thing just to note is we're not really proposing much of a change in methodology, rather allocation timing, if that makes sense. The the methodology, I think, as Peter likes to use that term at least, is really the total slice of the pie and what's going where specifically relevant to tourism-related spending. And that's not changing, but we can do our best to pull a T L T committee together.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to what you're posing, uh, but again, I'd like, we've got a committee and it'd be nice to have them uh weigh in rather than just bypass.
Sure.
I agree. Mike?
I was next.
Um.
Okay.
So yeah, Alex.
I sit on the city's liaison on the uh A V A. And I've been in the meetings and they've cut forty percent already um from their uh output. And they've applied for two grants and they've won those two grants, and they've applied for another. We're waiting for a response. But in the bigger picture, as an optimist, you know, we're looking forward to to cut and I get that and reallocate and I get that. But one thing that's going to help Albany recover is to get people in this city when things are back open. And we cannot do that by significantly cutting people that are going to be attracting those people to this city. Each, each person here has somebody that's going to come visit the city once this thing is open, but their job is to do it en masse, thousands, hundreds, dozens of people at a time. And if we continue to, if we cut them to the point where they cannot operate, then we are not going to have the people to come here to buy our food, to buy our clothes, attend our events, to visit our shops and stores downtown. So we need to be cautious and be very, very, very controlled in how we do this. You know, we've given a lot of money to small businesses to stay open, but if the T L T or the A V A can't get what was the plan of doing giving that money away? The T L T and A V A bring money into this city and we need to recognize that. Yes, I agree with some of the changes. They're from the A V A and the A V A. We need to hear from the T L T committee because that's their job. We subsidize them. They benefit from, benefit us by doing their job effectively. And if we're going to recover from this, where our small businesses are reaping the benefits of their work, we need to have their ear, we need to have their their feedback to us before we make any sweeping decisions on budget cuts and changes. Because if we need to figure something out, we need the experts to give us that that feedback.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay. Mike?
I'm going to take it a little bit different. Right now, we're in an economic downturn that's, we don't know how long it's going to last. But there's a lot of people up and down the I five corridor that could come to Albany to see the Carousel and see all kinds of things here, even though we don't have river rhythms and everything else. So I kind of equate it to advertising. And if we're going to significantly cut our advertising budget, which along Alex's lines draws people to the city, um, it'll be difficult because also in my mind, if we shut a program down right now, it's very difficult to turn around and get it to go again. Also, along the same lines, right now, we're required by law, I believe, to do fifty-three percent for advertising on the T L T budget. Or, and because we're grandfathered in, I think that's what it is, we're grandfathered in. So if we shut down this T L T program to the lack of funds and then reapply, that number, I believe, goes back up to seventy percent. So basically, there's a seventeen percent swing in in the dollars. So my, my concern is, is that there's, is, I agree with Bill. We need to find out where the money's at and if we can save these programs. Because if we go like, if we go down to one person or anything, we're going to start losing business. That's because I look at it as advertising and you don't cut off advertising. That's the last thing you want to do, but.
Especially the downturn.
Yep, that's just my take on that. That's it.
Yep.
So.
Um.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, Mary, I'll note, um, I I think it's really important that we be clear about what we're talking about here, and that's not cutting any budget. It's responding to reduced revenue. And the only source of funding for any of these agencies, in fact, in the majority of Economic Development Fund is transient lodging tax. And I want to be just really clear that there's no cutting, and Mike, uh, Mike, you had a great point there about affecting the percentage amount that we're spending on tourism-related advertising and so forth. This has no effect on that whatsoever. If the total amount of revenue goes down, but the allocation within that revenue maintains that base amount that you mentioned, although we're spending more on that right now than than we uh by law need to, um, then we're, we're in the clear. We're fine. It doesn't affect anything in the future whatsoever. This is not cutting a budget. It's just responding to reduced revenue, which is the pot of money we have to spend on these agencies.
Okay. I mean, I think that's where we need to really also see that with that budget, because there is, there is a lot of other costs associated in the budget. Um, you know, in our, because years back, we used to keep T L T in a total separate um, um budget, a so total separate fund. Then it was rolled in together to the economic development activities. So there's a lot of other costs associated in that activity that does come from T L T. And kind of an example would be thirty-five thousand is um central service charges. Um, there's information technology fifty-eight hundred, I T equipment replacement, seventy-seven hundred. There's another um fifteen thousand material supplies. I mean, so there is more other costs associated with it when um, so I think, so I think everything sort of needs to be, needs to be looked at in this um, in this budget. Um, but um, with that, I also, Mike, you brought up about the fifty-three percent. I have heard, you know, things that we should be seventy percent. I really do think we need to have Peter get clarification from the state, um, Oregon Tourism, find out what is our um actual percentage that we need to be setting aside for to related only by by law. So I don't want this to be, if we only allocate fifty-three at some point, which we are higher now, but at some point, if we did try to go to fifty-three, I wouldn't want to be challenged down the road. So I do think that does need to be totally clarified of of what that percentage is. Um, because some communities have been challenged over that. Um, so counsel, do you have any other questions? Like, maybe we can see if Rebecca or Lisa wanted to say a few words?
I'd like to hear from both of them.
Okay, Rebecca? I think she's still there. Did you want to say anything? Yep, I see a green light.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity.
Uh-huh.
I would like to say, we did submit some letters. I submitted one that kind of explained why we were um reaching out to our partners throughout the state and uh also locally um for support to to kind of demonstrate to you all the importance of tourism to our economy. And just like Seth said, it's a team sport. Economic development takes a lot of different approaches, and it's kind of like having a a well-diversified portfolio. You really want to have um your hand in a lot of pots. So we're fortunate that the Visitors Association has been working with partners on some development, um, like the Mid Willamette Valley Food Trail, which, when you look at what travel is going to be doing in the future, we're thinking that people are going to be driving. It's going to be a drive market. There are fewer people flying into Portland, so we'll be looking uh more along the I five corridor, a lot more people who will be coming from, you know, outside the fifty-mile radius, but still driving to get here. So um, they'll be looking for rural experiences. That would include going to farms, having a farm-to-table dinner, um, also having outdoor experiences like hiking and going to waterfalls and things like that. So working with Travel Oregon, we've been developing those kinds of activities and working, you know, over a year to develop those. So that's great. Um, unfortunately, we were also working on the sports end of things. So you know, we were trying to um develop our sports industry and tournaments and things like that. Well, right now, there's uh not a lot of opportunity there, so we're kind of holding off on that. But that just kind of shows you where, when we diversify our um plans, it comes out better that we have different areas to fall back on. So that's where it's important for us to have the multiple partners. We have the city, we have the Albany Downtown Association and the A V A. We have partners through Visit Corvallis, the Oregon um Restaurant and Lodging Association has sent a letter of support. We also had Travel Oregon and the Oregon Destination Association. They kind of are the spokesperson for tourism throughout the state. And they're all willing to come to the table to talk with us about our future plans. But we've been working locally with our partners, with A V A, the city, the Carousel, the museums, our winery, our hotels, um, which I should mention, you've also got a couple of letters from them to develop what our marketing plan is from here and what that looks like. So we're looking um trying to encourage people to keep Albany at the top of their mind when it's time to travel again. And um, as we move into phase two and non-essential travel is allowed, we're going to be encouraging people to come to Albany. They're going to want to see our carousel, and they're going to want to um go experience our farms and see our waterfront and tour our historic homes. And so that's the direction that we're going, and it really has been a team effort.
Okay, all right. Any questions of Rebecca? Or Rich?
It's not a question for Rebecca. It is so much as the idea, what we seem to be doing here is cutting economic development for the area because we're adding economic economic development in the city. Most industrial land is where the good-paying jobs are. It's not in, it's in the area. It's not in Albany. We really don't have a whole lot of quote shovel-ready. Other people do. Um, however much, you know, when you, when you work for the city, you're not going to be worried so much about what happens in Tangent or Lebanon or Millersburg, but you're going to be worried a lot more about what happens here. We're cutting those funds while we're maintaining the stuff that um is another piece of the economy. Um, I think that's short-sighted. Now, does everything need help? Well, everything needs to have its day, as it were. But cutting one to make the other more whole, I think, is a mistake. Um, when you don't have the ability to get those jobs in Millersburg and when someone has a place in Millersburg, a whole lot of them live in Albany. As you recall, that's what the um, when L B C C folks came to us, that was the As you recall, that's what the, um, when LBCC thing, folks came to us, that was the hue and cry. It's lifting all boats and a lot, most of the boats are living in Albany. So, um, just another way of looking at it.
Okay. Um, Lisa, did you want to say anything?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Counselors. We appreciate the time to speak and I think I'm echoing.
Let's have a computers, uh, bye.
Sorry. Anyway, we appreciate the opportunity to speak and I believe you received a number of letters from, um, Oregon Main Street, as well as some local business and property owners in support of continuing the good works that the Albany Downtown Association has done for so many years. Uh, appreciate the position that we are currently in and understand that the funding challenges and, um, loss of funding in many cases from the hotels. Uh, moving, uh, to working with specific agencies or projects that will be more key this year is very understandable. My one, uh, concern might be in looking at how we might gap some funding to, uh, continue forward. Um, looking at the last quarter and the low or absent revenue, what that might result in moving into the first quarter of next year and what reserve various partners may have in the ability to continue moving forward. So, um, that said, uh, we looking forward to working with whatever opportunity you provide and continuing to provide wonderful service and enjoying making, uh, downtown Albany a fabulous place for visitors to come and, uh, spend their time and building that back up to where it needs to be and hopefully together we'll make that happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Lisa. And is there any questions, counsel of, um, Lisa or Rebecca?
Mayor, may I make a point just to?
Sure can.
Why, with, with Seth has said.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's, uh, he's tried a couple of times now and I, I wanted to point out again that this is, uh, what he's proposed and we should have some context for you. We should have some figures as you asked, so you can see the, the totals for, uh, for the year, what we've received and what we had, uh, budgeted for. But this is not a reduction in terms of the percentage going to any of our tourism agencies or any of our tourism causes, with the exception, of course, of like the Northwest Art and Air Festival, which isn't going to happen. But in the end, what happens is that they stay at the level that they have been at. And if anything, they might go up a little bit in terms of percentage. But when the pie that we get, as Seth, Seth mentioned, that I like to refer to, when the pie becomes a smaller pie, even if the percentages are the same, the pie are smaller and that's just a sad reality. We don't have anything else to augment that with. So, um, we need to come back to you with the figures so you can see it. But I think that, uh, what Seth has created with both prongs of his approach, uh, is a, is an appropriate, uh, way to attack the problem.
Okay. All right. So you will bring something back to us, meaning so we can be able to see the numbers on paper and, what those projections would be?
Yep, absolutely.
Here. That'd be very helpful. Okay. Any other questions, counsel of staff? All right. Okay. Peter for this one. Okay. All right. With that, we're done with business, except business from the council. And let me start from the top, Bissy.
Nothing, Your Honor. I'm using two computers and I forgot I had used the mouse. Sorry. I'm good.
Uh, Dick, you're next. Anything, Dick? Oh, we lost your audio.
I, he just needs to unmute himself.
Yeah, he pushed the button.
Okay.
Am I back?
Yep, now you're back.
No.
Okay. All right. Mike?
No.
Okay, Bill?
Nothing. Thank you.
Uh, Alex?
No, thank you. Mayor, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. And Rich?
Just what I said before, hear it again.
Okay. The only thing I had was to, um, let you all know that our Waverly Lake, Lake Duck went back home to Waverly Lake this morning. So, um, he's back in the lake and I saw that Hossa just wrote a blog on, on the duck back. So he's been hanging in there and, um, and his Facebook page is live and getting a lot of, um, getting a lot of likes on it that, um, because the duck is happy to be back in the lake. So, so yeah, at least we've got something there for folks and kids in the community when they drive by to be able to put some smiles on their face. So, um, and it's also, people can stroll around the lake and walk around there and be able to, you know, view the, the duck and, um, and have some, some activity to do. Uh, with that, Peter, you're next.
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of things. Want to, just to let you all know that one of our ambulances was struck by a, a vehicle this evening and a, uh, uh, with a vehicle that had run a stop sign. There's no injuries, everybody's okay. But the ambulance will take some repair work, as will the other car. Um, the limitations of go-to meeting tonight that we saw, um, we'll be working on that to try to, uh, resolve that and, uh, ensure that, um, the, uh, the number of people isn't limited to twenty-six. And speaking of that, the next meeting is June 10th and, um, it will be an in-person meeting for the council. Although there will be, uh, as far as the public is concerned, we'll have go-to meeting for them to participate, uh, just because of the restrictions right now on, on the use of our space and the chambers. So, that's all I have.
So, did the, did the ambulance have to go away in an ambulance?
No, the ambulance was still ambulatory.
Oh.
Is our staff, okay, our staff's okay though, right?
Yes, no one was, no one was seriously hurt.
Been the one on Ninth and Kalapuya, I wonder. I saw in Pulse Point, traffic collision.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I'm, what Shane had passed on to me earlier this evening. But the important thing is that everybody's okay.
Yeah. Yes. So you bet. So, um, okay. And then when we do meet counsel next time in person, if any counselors are, um, comfortable being out in, on public then, we can still, we'll still have it set up for, um, for the go-to meeting, but.
I have to shave now.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, Jorge's been doing a great job, like overseeing. You're, you know, all the details worked out and we thank you so much, Jorge, for that. But, okay. Have anything else? Okay. Uh, and there's not on my agenda here our next meeting, but it is on June 10th. Uh, so with that, we're adjourned. So good night, everyone.
Be careful out there.